So, thank you. Let's move on to item 11.2. And with that, we'll call the mayor back into the room, please.
Oh, that's okay. All right. 11.2. Adopt a resolution approving notices of cancellation effective December 31st on the lease agreements with Lamar Media Corporation and the CBS Outdoor. We're talking billboards. So, Mr. Morris, I turn that over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a little bit of history on this. Some of you may know more about it than I do, but I'd like to give a little bit of history on these two billboards. We've actually been working on this for probably about six to eight months, at least, figuring out what the best thing was to do here. But going back in February 2002, Caltrans did it seven parcels to the city relating to the Western Placerville interchange, Ray Lawyer Drive interchange projects, in order to give that property to the city in order for us to complete those projects, or that project. At that time, a year later, it was determined that one of those parcels contained two billboard signs that should have been given as part of the properties given to the city. Now, with that statement that you saw in my staff report, there is some confusion and perhaps some misinformation that perhaps the parcels that were, the billboards are on, were not, was not one of those parcels that was given to the city. And we're working through some issues related to that. The fact of the matter is, the rights to the billboards were given to the city in 2003 for our control and to have at that time. Since that time, the existing leases have run on the property, on the billboards, and we have not done a lot of work, not really any work we have to do. We simply receive the monthly rent for these two billboards. Recently, we were approached by a billboard company to state that there's probably potential for additional revenue since those leases, one of the leases is very old, and that we should consider looking at renegotiating those leases. The first lease I'll talk about is with CBS Outdoor Advertising, formerly National Advertising Company. And the agreement began in 1996 with a 15-year term, which expired in 2010. With the expiration of the agreement, the lease operates on a year-to-year basis with a 90-day cancellation notice requirement. The lease pays $2,400 per year, or $200 per month. The second agreement was executed in 1998 between Caltrans and Palco and had an initial term of five years, ending in 2003. Following the initial term, the agreement became a month-to-month lease, with all other provisions remaining in effect. The lease provides also for a 90-day termination notice. This pay, this lease pays $7,200 per year, or $600 a month. Lamar Media Corporation purchased the rights to the billboard from Palco Incorporated in 2005. The two lease agreements, as you can see, illustrates the disparity in the lease cost for those. And that's what came to our attention, to note that, yes, there probably is the potential to realize more revenue if we are going to have those billboards there. The urgency to this item is the fact that, as I mentioned, one of the leases, the CBS Corporation, or CBS Outdoor Advertising lease expires on an annual basis, which is December 31st of this year, we determined. Therefore, in order to cancel that one, we need to give 90 days' notice prior to December 31st, which gives us until October 1st to do that, if we want to cancel those. So, based on that, we determined that it would probably be in the city's best interest if we're going to continue the billboards, to put out an RFP for management of those signs. And so, we have prepared, you have as an attachment here, an RFP that could be used to achieve that. Now, a couple other pieces to note. The billboard, the billboards, we determined in looking at how the new ramps for Ray Lawyer Drive would go, go when they're constructed. It was initially determined that they would, the billboards would not be in conflict with those. If you look at the map that is attached here, it shows the design there. It shows the eastbound on-ramp is actually a cloverleaf design that would, not a cloverleaf, but a rounded design that would circle back on the, would be the west side of the freeway around to go east. And then, the west, or the eastbound off-ramp also comes up on that side, but would actually put the billboard in between those two ramps, as you can see. Now, technically, that is, would not be a conflict, we determined. However, we're fairly confident, in talking to Caltrans, that they would require those either to be eliminated, or moved when this goes in, simply because you need to get access to those billboards in order to change the sign face and et cetera. And Caltrans would not like giving us an easement in order for the companies to get on there to change the sign face. And for that reason, we feel fairly strongly that those would have to be moved at some point to a new location when those interchange improvements are done.
In that area? In that same?
We would look at, there would be probably some flexibility there, but yes, in that same area. So, with that, we still feel that we should, if the council wants to move forward this, that we should go ahead with the RFP and cancel those contracts, in order to us to attempt to realize the additional revenue that might, that would be available from new leases. At the same time, we have added language into the RFP that states that it is likely that the signs will have to be moved in the future, and that included in their cost should be a proposal for who would be responsible for moving the sign and what that cost would be. Each company that gives us proposal will then be compared, and we will determine what is the most efficient, the most, the best deal for the city in that process. So, we've had a lot of discussions, including with our city attorney, as far as how we move forward with this. We do feel that it is possible to move forward with the RFP to cancel those. It is our assumption that nothing would be changed in far, as far as moving the signs right now, because we are a ways away from that. However, you will note that the next item, I believe it is, on our agenda regarding Western Placerville interchanges, a discussion talking about changing our order of those on-ramps, off-ramps that we are looking at on Ray Lawyer Drive, and would move the west, the eastbound off-ramp, thank you, to, to an earlier date, rather than a later date. So, it may affect removal, removal or moving of these signs earlier than we think. So, with that, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer those. You have all of the information, I believe, in the attached agreements and the potential RFP for your information.
Thank you. You bet. Actually, before we get to council questions, Mr. Yule, can we get you to turn the air conditioning down? Thank you. All right. Vice Mayor.
Temperature up?
Temperature up, yeah. It's cold. Thank you very much.
Ladies are cold.
Your ladies are cold. All right. Vice Mayor Hagan, questions?
A couple of things. One is, my concern was, one, if we were to release these, and with this construction going, coming on, I'm not sure there's too many other locations where a billboard would be appropriate, because I believe the scenic highway of Highway 50 starts at about the Placerville Drive undercrossing. So, I'm not so sure that these two billboards would qualify for locations closer to town. And it's, you know, basically, the rest of town for billboards is from, from the creek, Weber Creek up. So, that's private property. So, I personally don't think there's going to be much interest in long-term leases for this type of a thing. And I do find it, I found it ironic that we were looking at the scenic highway concerns of a rooftop building, at the same time we were looking at billboards. So, I, I actually did find it very challenging to be looking at both these at the same time. I understand the value in outdoor advertising, and I believe that there are some, some things to be gained by outdoor advertising. I also think that there are, there's a place for it. I don't believe we have any space left in the city of Placerville for outdoor advertising based upon the scenic highway and the location of these off-ramps that will be. At best, I think we might be able to get some extensions of those at the existing sites. And then, when they go to bid, the understanding would be that they come down, because once they start that, you're right, they're not going to be able to be, access these for repairs, sign changes and so forth. So, I don't see a big competition for this particular site. And I think it may be an opportunity for us to move proactively, along with our scenic highways and the other things we're doing in town, to say, these two are going to come down once we start construction of those eastbound off-ramps. The other, my other concern would be, it's not just the location and servicing those, but the infrastructure, to extend that infrastructure out during construction and then during placement of that construction. The additional cost of the engineering and the, bringing that power out to that facility doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me, so.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hagan. Councilmember Wilkins, questions for staff at this point?
I'm glad to hear it.
All right. Councilmember Barelli.
Well, I think Carl brought up a lot of good points. I was just going on existing, and I have to tell you that those two signs have bothered me for a long, long time. I think they're just ridiculous, the way they're placed side by side with two different advertisements. And it's, you know, it's kind of confusing. To me, it's just kind of looks cluttered. And that was one of the things, is if we do stay with this, and I was glad to hear you say they're going to have to be moved, and I was thinking if we could configure them in a, if, if we do keep them, if we could configure them in a different way. But that, that was my only comment, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Patton.
I also had a conflict with this being on the agenda. And, but, all I kept seeing was, oh, we're going to give this up with an RFP to some external advertising person. The next thing you know, we're going to have one of those triangular monster billboards, like they have down in Shingle Springs. And that's just not my intention at all. I remember there was an abandoned billboard across the freeway, just east of Ray Lawyer Drive, that the city eventually had removed. I don't know if Pierre remembers it, but, and then, the only reason we have the two billboards in the Weber Creek Canyon right there is because the city kind of traded the Harvey's billboard that used to be downtown by the Welcome to Placerville for that site. So, I mean, we, there's been attempts to make our community more, to look better. And, and I think this is a perfect opportunity to say, look, you know, we don't want to look like everywhere USA. Certainly, I'm not a fan of billboards. I'm not a fan of any, I haven't seen any that I like yet. So, as far as I'm concerned.
Too young to know the Burma shame.
Oh, no, I know the Burma shame. So anyways, as far as.
I don't consider that a billboard.
As far as I'm concerned, it would not hurt my feelings at all if these went away.
All right. Thank you. I guess the only, the question I have is, what are we looking at timing-wise for the ramps and all of that? I mean, I know with this new, especially this proposed.
That's probably our next item, but Nate, can you respond to that?
Just briefly.
Yeah, I'll be talking about it more, a couple of items from now, but 2016, 2017, so as early as June 2016.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And I know that the billboards are in a current state of some disrepair. What is the ability of the city to repair and maintain them on our own?
Well, in the agreements, the leases are required to repair those. So, I believe that we could go back on them and require them to bring them up to acceptable stage.
So, what happens if we cancel the contract with the leasing agents? Do the billboards stay with us?
That's correct.
Okay. No?
No.
John looked.
Not that the lessee would necessarily want them, but they may very well have the right to remove those structures.
Okay.
Could be good.
Okay. Well, the point, the point I was having is, until the highway gets, gets built out, I absolutely, I agree with my fellow council members, I hate coming to town and seeing a Budweiser commercial, and a Nash, you know, beer, and whatever it is, that relates, that does not relate to our community. It's visual pollution. That if we were to entertain the idea of keeping the billboard, at least maybe one of them, until this interchange is, is brought forth, I can see perhaps economic impact, economic value to our downtown, having, you know, a billboard advertising historic Main Street or Placerville with, you know, a beautiful photograph, like we have on the Placerville Downtown website, or something like that. And short of that, I think I would also be in favor of removing those. So, yeah, that's just my personal.
Can I make a couple of comments?
Yes, absolutely.
Couple of things I just wanted to, first of all, let me state that if you want to remove them, I don't think it's a big concern of mine. It is a little bit of revenue on an annual basis, but I understand the conflict, I agree. We did, however, feel that we needed to bring this back, if we were going to consider it. I apologize if I was on this agenda tonight, but it was kind of a tough one. But if that's the way you want to go, I understand, and it does make sense in a lot of ways. I just want to respond to a couple of comments of Councilmember Hagan's. We have looked at a couple of those parcels that we were given by the county, the would-be potential sites where you could put a billboard and still have it up. And you're right, the, to the, they're both located to the west of where they're, a little bit of where they're currently located. To the east, you're getting into Sina Corridor, and no, we wouldn't be able to move it in that direction. And there was one more thing I was going to respond to. It's lost my mind, but that, that was the main one, is that we, if you wanted to keep those, we did look at a couple of sites that we feel would be suitable for the billboards, that are currently city-owned property, would not be in conflict with the future improvements to Ray Lawyer, Fornie, et cetera. So, there is a potential to do that. Again, but I want to emphasize, I understand the need to maybe get rid of those. I had to negotiate and pay to get rid of a sign in another community I was in, and I fully understand that, so.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Barelli.
Would it behoove us to, to keep them? I mean, to, you know, to not totally release them, to wait and see? I don't know. What are we doing?
Well, one other option you could possibly have would be simply to renegotiate the current agreements. Now, since they are on a, on an automatic renewal, I'm not sure exactly what incentive they would have to do that. But that was something you could do, is leave them under the current contracts, just renegotiate those contracts, with the understanding, and our ability to cancel those and get rid of those once the Ray Lawyer Drive interchange goes work.
Is it, is it like year-to-year now?
One of them, the CBS one is year-to-year, the Lamar one is month-to-month. Both require 90-day notice, however.
So, what, what harm would be done, then, if we just don't do anything? And if we just keep on that extension?
None. We would continue to receive that money. However, we need to note that we need to be prepared, because the one has a one-year term. We need to make sure that we monitor that and give the proper notice 90 days ahead of the expiration of that year.
Well, maybe after we hear Nate's presentation, and we'll get a better feeling about when it's going to happen.
When, yeah. It's still a while, but.
Right. I mean, he was saying 16, so that's a couple of years. I mean, that would certainly give us a, you know, we'd have a year to.
I guess my recommendation would be, if you want to continue those, you still allow staff or recommend to staff that we go back and try to renegotiate, because the one cost, as you can see, is really out of line with what the other one is. The other option, perhaps, would be to go ahead and go out on the RFP, but put on there with the understanding that, you know, they'll continue as is until they're eliminated, and see what advertisers come in with a potential bid. One of the things that brought this whole thing up was, the company that brought it up to us is a local company. It's not a national company, necessarily. And, and actually, we looked at, and there's actually two local companies that may have interest in submitting a proposal. And I, when I say local, I'm in Eldorado County. So, there is a potential for that, doing it that way also, to go ahead and go on the RFP, however, change it to note that these may be limited to only two or three, four years, we don't know. And they would submit their proposals based on that.
And we'd still have no control over the content, because they would be responsible for that.
That's correct. That's correct, yeah.
Yeah. Exactly.
Isn't there some language in the content regarding public acceptability and so forth? I mean, because there's just a couple up the road that.
Like the Bunny Ranch?
The Bunny Ranch.
Bunny Ranch, that CBS, which is the same company, just had to remove because of public pressure.
There is some language that talks about that in the contract, however, it's, it's a fine line, and you have to look at it, what you can restrict.
Okay, great. Well, let's, at this time, open public comment up on this issue. Please come forward and state your name for the record. Good evening, Michael.
Good evening. Michael Drobish, Placerville. Seems to be city sign ordinance night. So, billboards and off-premise ad copy are expressly prohibited in the sign ordinance. So, hoping for some consistency here. Equal application of the law. I was just going through the sign ordinance again today, so I wrote down, it wasn't planned in, I wrote down the 14 prohibited signs in the sign ordinance. I paraphrased it, so. One, flashing. Two, moving. Three, a boards. Four, dilapidated, abandoned, or dangerous to health and public safety. Dangerous to health and safety, like town hall sign out here that's ready to fall on someone's head. Five, fence, pole, rocks, natural features. Six, mobile signs. Seven, pennants and banners. Eight, oversized balloons. Nine, commercial billboards and off-premise ad signs. Ten, wind signs. Eleven, PA systems. Twelve, dangerous illuminated signs. Thirteen, roof signs. And fourteen, illuminated canopies or fascia unless approved. So, if you don't like the billboards, here's your opportunity. If they have to be moved per Caltrans, oops, you can't get a new permit. Gone. I'd like to see them gone. You know, we've had how many trees wiped out through there? All that's gone, and now we're going to have this naked, ugly entrance to Placerville, except for two prominent, brand-new billboards, which you will have no control over ad copy. So, this is the chance. Just, they have to move, oops, they're gone. And please apply the sign ordinance equally. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Kirk Smith of Placerville. Just to echo the comments just made, I think for consistency, your policy regarding billboards should be consistent with the spirit of the laws related to signs on roofs and the like. Again, I think for the historic area, it'd be great to move towards having signs made of wood, much as it is for a lot of historic communities around here. And again, like Carmel, where you want people to get out, get on the street, walk around, and see the businesses and the special services that are offered here. I wasn't offended by some two-by-three-foot sign on the top of the Herrick Building, but I'm certainly offended by all the billboards. I just invite you to imagine when you come up from Folsom Boulevard, just below Folsom, and compare the left side with the right side. The left side was developed by humans, and the right side was developed by God, and I kind of like the one on the right. Likewise, when you get past Ray Lawyer Drive, and you come into the city, it is so gorgeous. I love that undeveloped land. So, you can have signs that say, "Welcome to Placerville," and you have these great photographs, but I think the scenery, when you come here, says the same thing. It's like seeing that wonderful sign that said, without words, "Welcome," otherwise known as a Red Cross sign. And it's the same thing that the wordy sign immediately across the street says with a whole bunch of words, "Welcome to Hangtown." If you keep the scenery that says Eldorado County, the, the beauty of the area, that says it much more effectively. So, to be consistent, get rid of these billboards. We don't need them. The county screwed up when they somehow let some get in before. And then, you're going to have the Bunny Ranch Bar, and heaven knows what else. You don't need it. I think it was Ms. Barelli who pointed out to me about how pole signs aren't really very effective. And as I was driving up from Oakland today, and I needed gas, all they needed was these discreet little signs along the highway that tell you restaurant, gas station, et cetera. I don't need the name of Arco, Texaco, et cetera. That's all they needed. I didn't need the big pole signs. So, same thing related to billboards. You don't need them. We don't need them.
Thank you. Take your time, Kathy.
Kathy Lishman again. I'm recovering from a broken bone in my foot.
Oh, we're sorry.
And it's better, but it's worse. I admire you and commend you for having concerns about even having those billboards there. And I was on the council when the Harvey's sign came down, and that was really monumental. And I'm sorry it had to go into Weber Creek. But a lot of times, the billboards don't even advertise anything that relates to the city at all, and it, and it is visual blight. And this is a golden opportunity to get rid of those. And to have a goal, to have no more billboards in the city limits. In Sacramento, they're enormous, and then, you know, they're just enormous, and then, they get bigger. And then, the sign people figure out ways. I wish that we could have a, gather signatures to put something on, on the ballot for the state that didn't allow billboards, because they really don't help any community. And like I said, what they advertise is of no benefit to the city. And the money, it's not that much, and it's not worth it.
Thank you.
Sue Rodman. Amen. Great, Carl Barelli, or, not.
The other Carl.
Carl Hagan. Anyway, Councilmember Hagan, good for you. Yes, I agree. How about an RFP for removal of these darn things? They are ugly. They are not a good invitation to come to Placerville. They're the opposite. Let's get rid of them.
Thank you, Sue. At this point, I'll close up a comment and bring it back to the council for additional comments and direction. Councilmember Wilkins, would you like to weigh in on this issue?
Sure. I think we should get rid of them. I liked what Kirk Callan Smith said, where we have, why would we take a picture of our hillside and then put it here so you could look at it, when you could just look at the hillside?
Vice Mayor Hagan?
I think it done enough damage.
Councilmember Barelli or Patton? All right. Anyone want to entertain a motion? Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure what your motion is, but if, one more comment, the city attorney reminded me of one option, if you want us to try and renegotiate those, is to go ahead and cancel them, and we'll use that as the renegotiation with the current companies.
I'm not hearing much renegotiation.
Okay. Just get rid of them now. Okay. I just want to make sure.
And that's the way I feel, I, I'm, if, if the rest of the council wants them to go, that's fine, but I don't want to cut off our nose to spite our face. If we've got a couple of years that we can get out of them and get that income, I mean, if it, you know, Placerville is not flush, as we all know, so every little bit helps. So, I, so I just want to, I want to do the right thing. And if we can renegotiate for a couple of years till we need them to go down, then I'm all for, you know. But I, I don't know what to agree to.
I have a concern with the current contracts, to make sure we don't end up with a couple of blank billboard former signs.
And maybe leaving us with expense.
Right. I would like to make sure that the current contracts, that not only is their lease up, but then they have 90 days to remove all of the remnants.
Is there a demolition clause?
There is, and, let me just take, I read it, and I want to make sure I read it in both of them, because I know that in one of them, for sure, I read where the tenant or lessee has the obligation to remove. And it's in, it's in that one? It's in both of them, then?
Well, I like Sue Rodman's idea of asking for an RFP to remove the sign, the billboards, rather than, rather than waiting three or four more years.
Yeah. Both, both agreements have requirement that the tenant remove the property.
Okay.
There doesn't seem to be a timeframe on it, which means that it would be interpreted as a reasonable time.
But you would have to let the contract run its term, correct?
Well, the.
The 90 days.
Yeah. The one contract, which is a month-to-month, basically, just simply because it, normally in a month-to-month, you give them 30 days' notice, but in this particular agreement, it provides for a longer notice of 90 days. That one, we can give the 90 days' notice pretty much any time. The other one, because it runs on an annual basis, you can only terminate it 90, you give notice 90 days before the end of that year, which is December 31st. So that's why the city manager is bringing this to you now, because if we want to do something with that one, we've got to give them their notice by October 1st. Otherwise, you're going to be stuck with them for another year, and.
So I'll make the motion that we give them cancellation notice effective December 31st, and give them 90 days to remove everything after that date.
I'll second that.
All right. So we have a motion by Vice Mayor Hagan, a second by Councilmember Patton. All those in favors? Aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and billboards are gone. So I, I definitely agree with that direction. Thank you very much. All right. And with that, we move.